Thank you, Mr. Gilmer. Okay, it's seven o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. I just want to welcome everybody to our first completely virtual action meeting that we're having here in North Penn. And since this is a little new format for me, I would ask everybody for their patience as I look through the screen to see who is speaking and who's on mute. I really appreciate that. And before we get started, I also just want to say thank you to all of our staff and acknowledge all the work that you guys have been doing during this time, this closure, getting the continuing education plans in place for everybody. I want to, you know, thank the parents and guardians who are assisting the students at home and all the students that are logging in every day and doing their work. I'm sure this closed period is not easy for anybody, but it is heartening to see everybody working together to make it work. So thank you very much for that. And one last thing I wanted to also have a shout out to the senior class. I think, you know, for me personally, and I know several of the other board members, the effect that this is having on the senior class is really, it breaks our hearts. So seniors should be doing a lot of other things this spring, getting ready for prom, you know, playing their sports, doing the spring show. Being in quarantine was not something that anybody expected. So we just want you to know that we feel for you and, you know, we're thinking of you. So, okay, so moving on from that, we will start with the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. "The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay. Um, we are going to take a virtual roll call.
Hey, thank you, Mrs. Stoll. Dr. Lewis Campbell?
Present.
Ms. Wesley?
Present.
Mr. Resch?
Present.
Mr. McBain?
Present.
Mrs. Ramich?
Present.
Mr. Casa?
Present.
Mrs. G?
Present.
Mr. Fusco?
Present.
And Mrs. Stoll?
Present.
Nine board members present. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skoraki. Okay, moving on then to the suspension of policy 006.1, the attendance at meetings via electronic communications. We recommend the suspension of Board Policy 006.1 with specific regard to the limitation on the number of school directors participating in a meeting electronically, and the requirement of having a majority of the board physically present at a meeting location. Obviously, we're doing that because of this closure. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casa. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Audience of citizen guidelines. Mr. Gilmer, is there anyone waiting to speak?
Oh, good. Now, wait a minute, unmuted. I'm still a little shaky on this, you know what I mean?
Does Mr. Patchel still have the three-minute clock that he can save?
Wait a minute. I'm getting it. Hang on. Hello?
Okay, we can hear you, Mr. Patchel.
Oh, that, thank you very much for a few technical difficulties. It's a pleasure to have all the board together right after this finance meeting. I think there was a lot of discussions made. I think one of the, one of the nice things was Ms. Lois Campbell's suggestion. I think it would be appropriate at this time if we're having budgetary problems that we need to revisit all the salaries of this, of the administrative staff. Last time I counted it, Dr. Dietrich, I, I'm six assistants. I mean, I don't know what the cumulative salary of this thing is, but Ms. Lois Campbell had brought up the situation at our institution of higher learning that they were considering these cuts. And I'm sure that, you know, the people are doing a fantastic job, but you know what? There's a lot of people out here. Another five million people are not working anymore. This is really unprecedented in the, in the experience of all the people. I mean, it's, it's, we need to have positive remedial action that can be sustainable. I pointed out about that I went over, I paid my taxes, Montgomery Township, you know, we haven't had a tax increase in eight or nine years. This is why I moved here. And I want to know why that the student body and the number, the headcount, really hasn't gone up in five, six, seven years. It's the same number, but if we backtrack on where that budget was, it was about 210 million, 220 million, 230 million, 250 million. So, I mean, I'm pretty shocked. Now, where's all this extra money gone for the same headcount? I don't know what we're doing, but, you know, we ought to look into it because it shouldn't be like that. And I, maybe it was the last administration that was in, you know, I thought they were running a pretty tight ship. I mean, everybody complains about everything, you know, but we have to look. You need to have an immediate cessation of all building. Okay, that's the first thing. I don't care what these suits or these builders or anything, the state, they, they were working on Senate bills sometimes about renegotiating, the, the Senate was voting on to give the boards the immediate thing to renegotiate things that were already in the pipeline. I, I just, I just don't understand it. And Ms. Wesley brought out a good thing. I think she said at that other meeting, "Look, I don't want to borrow any more money. You understand? We're, we're not playing a game here, and the public is really suffering. I want you to recognize this." You know, I mean, I'm at a pretty good thing, 73 years. I, you know, it, it's, it's by planning, not by accident. And you need to be mindful of what's going on around here. I mean, I pointed out, every one of you people is making a lot of money. You probably, not one on the board is even missing, missing a paycheck. And you know that there are people, go over to Hatfield Village. I, it's, it's, it's pretty, pretty disheartening. And I want you to be mindful of all this stuff. And Mr. Skoraki, I understand that, oh, it has dramatic impact over right up, but you know what? I don't care. I care about right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patchel. Mr. Gilmer, is there anyone else that is waiting to make public comment?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
You can. Thank you.
Thank you all for your service. I sent this same comment in for, for review and writing, just in case I didn't cover everything well. I'm one of the parents that is doing the homeschooling and trying to keep up with the changes. And I think a lot of us have dug in and we're doing the best we can. I'm concerned about the return to school. I'm concerned that we're all so neck deep in the day-to-day catch-up and keep-up that no one's really thinking about what happens when we return. And I think there's some key questions that I'd like the board and, and certainly Dr. Dietrich to at least begin to think about, if you haven't already, and if you have, great. And I, and I did send them into writing, in writing, I'm just concerned about how we're going to assess and evaluate this very unprecedented learning that's going on right now. So when the kids get back, we can assess them quickly, we can address whatever shortcomings happened during distant, distance learning and sort of sort out the problems. There's some talk on the national level of winding up with it, with sort of a deficit asterisk kind of year. And I don't think anybody wants that. And I don't think everybody wants to just sort of toss away these 12, 15 weeks, whatever it turns out to be. But I do think, to avoid that, we need to figure out what we're doing when we get back. And it seems to me that you folks who are not necessarily in the, in the trenches and in the classrooms may be the people to think about the broader ideas and the broader problems. And I just wanted to throw that out to you all. And if you're already working on this, great. And that's what I need to hear. I, I think that if, if you have so many parents engaged and, and our learning curve is steep, we're going to be more involved with the school. I think as a result, you're going to get a higher level of interest. I hope you are because of this. And I think when they get back, you may have, you may have a smarter audience. And we may be ready to accept what you propose in terms of assessment for what has happened. So I, I'll stop now. Thank you again for your service and for all that you've done to sort of smooth over certainly a very tough time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Bigum. You said you submitted your questions online. So I don't know if Dr. Dietrich or Dr. Bauer or Dr. Ruffo wants to address that now or if we'll respond by email?
Just generally, the things that the speaker brought up are things that we're discussing. So we have our daily meetings and we're talking about those very things. So it's a balancing between dealing with what we know we have in front of us immediately with looking ahead to when we come out of this eventually. So it's something that we're really talking about quite a bit, actually. So thank you for that. And I think I just saw an email that was forwarded so we can also correspond tomorrow.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. Mr. Gilmer, is there anyone else ready to make? There will also be another opportunity for public comment towards the end of the meeting. Is that it? Okay. Great. Thank you, Mr. Gilmer. All right, now we will move on then to the approval of the minutes from the March 19, 2020 meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Just raise your hand and I'll, I'll see the second. Okay, motion by Mr. Fusco, a second by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on then to the personnel or committee reports, rather. First up would be the Personnel Committee. The Personnel Committee of the Board met virtually in executive session on March 31st, April 14th, and April 16th, 2020, to discuss matters of personnel, including the appointment of staff, staffing considerations, and personnel budgeting for the 2020-2021 school year, and collective bargaining. End of report. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, we will move on to the Finance Committee report. Mr. Fusco, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoll. Okay, the Finance Committee met on four occasions since the last report, and honestly, it feels more like 12, but here we go. At the March 2nd, 2020, Special Finance Committee meeting, the following items were reviewed. Number one, departmental budget presentations were made by administrators in school and community engagement, district communications, technology, and emergency management in safe schools. Two, the North Monco Technical Center budget was presented. North Penn's share is increasing by 4.63% or $175,985 due to the increased enrollment of North Penn students. Mr. Skoraki reported that the Act One exception for special education in the amount of $1,541,260 was approved by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Number four, the audit request for proposals, proposals process and timeline was reviewed. And the fifth item, Mr. Skoraki reported that the 2020-2021 medical and prescription rates will remain the same as the current year. So that was the March 2nd meeting. At the March 10th meeting, we discussed, Mr. Sheer from Public Financial Management reviewed the opportunity to advocate, I'm sorry, to advance refund the 2018 and 2019 bond issues with taxable bonds. Secondly, the sale of seven obsolete school buses was presented. And third, the 2020 PASBO policy priorities were reviewed, which includes a call for cyber school funding reform. At the April 6th, 2020, Finance Committee meeting, which was our first official virtual meeting, yeah, I guess it was because the 10th was something, yeah. The following items were reviewed. Mr. Wayne McCullough, Executive Director of PASBO, presented the ASBO Meritorious Budget Award to the Business Office. This is the fifth consecutive year the district has received the award, and North Penn is one of only 10 districts in the state to receive this recognition. Number two, Mr. Skoraki reviewed the results of the bond refunding of the 2018 and 2019 bonds. The refunding saved the district over $400,000. Mr. Skoraki provided an update on the status of the 2020-2021 general fund budget. Due to the COVID-19 shutdown in economic activity, district revenues were lowered by over $2 million from the budget, a budget deficit of $14.3 million was presented at the meeting. Mr. Skoraki reviewed the 2020-2021 real estate tax rebate program and the impact of further expansion of the program. The real estate tax installment program was reviewed with possible alterations that would spread out the tax bill over a longer period of time. Finally, the emergency feeding program statistics were reviewed. Over 22,000 meals were served during the first three weeks of the program. Thank you to the School Nutrition Services Department under the leadership, under the leadership of Melissa Frohlich for serving our students. And before we go on, I just want to say that, you know, I've seen this meme a number of times, Mr. Rogers said, "In a crisis, look for the people that are helping." Those are the people that are helping. So thank you very much for everything you have done. At the April 14th, 2020, Special Finance Committee meeting, which was a virtual meeting, the following items were reviewed. Mr. Skoraki and Mr. Schneider reviewed the bid results for the NAP Elementary School project. The bids came in underestimates by $1,605,260 or 4.52%. The notice of intent to award the bids appears on tonight's agenda. And finally, Mr. Skoraki presented a 2020-2021 budget update along with 10-year fiscal projections. The fiscal projections modeled various types of economic recoveries, tax rates, and the impact on the district's finances. The proposed final budget is scheduled to be adopted on May 12th, and the final budget adoption is scheduled for June 18th. The next Finance Committee meeting will be held on May 4th at 6:00 PM. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. That was a very long report.
Yes, it was.
Do we have any comments or questions for Mr. Fusco? Seeing none, all in favor? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'm kidding ahead.
Moving away from me.
Sorry, sorry. My bad. All right, moving on to safe schools. Mr. Casa?
Thank you. The Safe Schools Committee met on February 24th. There was no meeting in March. Dr. Bauer shared a summary of data that could be made available to the board and executive session at a future date. He also shared an update about his work with Hanover Research to conduct the second school climate survey during the spring. Custom questions on this year's climate survey will surround the topic of a potential ninth-grade center. Clearly, this is a, the minutes in a pre-pandemic world. Mr. Dur then provide a progress update on the district's behavioral threat assessment team. The group is working to develop a formal protocol which will meet legal mandates recently put in place in Pennsylvania. Mr. Dur then gave an overview of a law enforcement coordination meeting, which had occurred that morning, as well as efforts underway to design a targeted safe-to-say, safe-to-say training for older elementary school students, and a recent training offered by the district to emergency responders about propane-fueled school buses. Finally, the committee heard a summary of the National Interscholastic Athletic Safety and Security Summit, which was attended by a team from North Penn. A working group will be formed to more clearly define safety and security protocols for the before and after school times. The next meeting of the Safe Schools Committee is scheduled to take place on Monday, April 27th, 2020, at 6:00 PM, virtually.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. Casa? I have a question. Are we still doing the Hanover survey since it's focusing on the ninth-grade center?
We are not. Right now, I spoke with them on Monday. And in order to, I mean, one of the primary focus of this year's survey was to compare last year to this year. And to take the survey now, the exact same survey we took last year, the results in comparison, obviously, wouldn't really relate because it's not the same environment. So they agreed to push it to next year.
So next spring or the fall?
They said they'd be willing to do it in the fall, certainly. So we'll have to discuss, but right now it's just been postponed. It was supposed to be next week.
Thank you.
Yes?
Does anyone else have any comments or questions? All right, moving on then to education, community, and policy. Mrs. G, please.
A statement from the regular ECP meeting, which was held on March 3rd, 2020. The, sorry, I just broke my screen for something up there. Adoption of policies. As a result of the ongoing policy review process with PSBA, several policies were presented to the committee that had been reviewed by administration, the district solicitor, and Mr. Fusco. Those policies were on the March 19th, 2020 agenda for a first reading. They are on the agenda tonight for approval. Repeal of policies, as a result of the ongoing policy review process, with PSBA policies were presented to the committee that will be repealed following the adoption of those policies that were taken. Notice of intent to repeal specific policies was on the March 19th agenda. They are on the agenda tonight for approval to repeal. Amendment of policies, as a result of the ongoing policy review process, policy number 005, organization is amended to revise the current education community policy committee to the education curriculum and instruction committee. A separate policy committee will also be formed. Textbook and research, resource adoption. Through the curriculum review process, textbooks and various related resources, as well as a play, have been identified for adoption by the district in the areas of secondary English, secondary social studies, AP environmental science, and Spanish I and II. These resources were available for a 30-day public review and are included on the agenda for approval this evening. One student travel item was presented, but the event was later canceled due to COVID-19. Just for a cultural proficiency update, an update on the cultural proficiency effort in the district was given to the committee. These efforts have targeted culturally responsive instruction and professional development, disproportionality in special education, and discipline, recruitment, and retention of diverse staff, and student family and community engagement. Due to the COVID-19 stay-at-home order in Pennsylvania, the ECP committee did not meet on April 7th, 2020, as scheduled. The next planned meeting, I believe, is May 5th, but Dr. Ruffo could just confirm that for me. This is not in the board. Dr. Ruffo, can you confirm that?
Yes, sorry, didn't hit the unmute button fast enough. Your practice made that.
Make that. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. G. Thank you, Dr. Ruffo. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, we will move on to Facilities and Operations. Mr. Casa, please.
Thank you. The Facilities and Operations Committee met on February 25th, 2020. There was no meeting in March. A request to waive facility use fees for the Buxmont officials and North Penn Valley Umpires Association was discussed, and the committee heard from a representative of the Buxmont officials. After discussions and consideration, the committee did not recommend granting the waiver. It is recommended by the administration that the committee approve the advertisement for proposals from professional third-party testing and inspection companies for the Crawford Stadium and NAP Elementary School projects. This advertisement for proposals is part of this evening's agenda for the board's considerations. Mr. Schneider reviewed the bid results for both the Gwinnett Square chiller replacement and the Pembroke Library HVAC replacement projects. Both of these bid awards are part of this evening's agenda for the board's consideration. Mr. Schneider and Mr. Lanetti provided a presentation outlining the current athletic field use and the planned improvement plan for the high school, Pembroke, Penfield, and the Pendale middle schools. This improvement plan will commence this spring and continue into the future. That obviously is open to other determinations now with the global pandemic. Mr. David Schrader of Schrader Group Architects provided information regarding master plan alternatives for the future projects, including the proposed ninth-grade center and renovations to the high school. The committee requested that a proposal and contract for the design of the ninth-grade center be presented at the March Facilities and Operations meeting, which was canceled due to the pandemic and the state border. Mr. Schneider provided an update on the additions and renovations to NAP Elementary School. Included with this update was the public bid date scheduled for March 25th. Mr. Schneider then provided an update on the Crawford Stadium project, which is scheduled to commence directly after graduation in June. That, that's obviously an asterisk moment right now. The next Facilities and Operations meeting is scheduled for April 27th, 2020, at 6:30 PM, virtually, and will include a special board action meeting to consider the award of bids and issuance of the notice to proceed for the NAP Elementary School project. I'd like to also clarify that that statement in the minutes about commencement, construction on Crawford, scheduled to commence directly after graduation in June, that was obviously a reflection of the minutes at that moment in time. And there's still other determinations to be considered by the board. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. Casa? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the North Monco Technical Career Center. Dr. Wanda Lois Campbell, please.
Yes, but North Monco Technical Career Center Joint Operating Committee was scheduled to meet Monday, March 16th, Monday following the shutdown due to COVID-19. Therefore, we're rescheduled for this coming Monday, April 20th, and I'll be glad to give you a report after we meet at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lois Campbell. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, next up, Mrs. Ramich, please.
MCIU Board met on February 26th to discuss and approve changes in grant budget, change orders for the 1605 Main Street construction projects and changes in personnel. The board also heard reports from the Head Start Policy Council and legislative updates. The meeting scheduled for March 25th was canceled. The next meeting of the MCIU Board is scheduled for Wednesday, April 22nd. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. Does anyone have any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on then to the North Penn Educational Foundation. Mrs. Ramich, again, please.
Great. The foundation met last week in an online format to discuss the requests from, from the school district to support the cost of internet access for families in need. For four years now, the foundation has funded Kajit devices in homes for this purpose. Now with distance learning needed for kindergarten through 12th grade, the number of families needing assistance has grown. I am proud to report that the foundation unanimously approved more than 30,000 to purchase hotspots and T-Mobile internet access. And I am even happy to tell you that these devices have, are already in the hands of our students. I want to thank the district team who helped to make this happen, from technology to transportation to English-language learner teachers. Thank you all so much for helping us to get this done and done so quickly. In an effort to help offset the cost, the foundation has also launched a North Penn Strong clothing sale. Within three days of opening the site, over 1,500 items have been sold. And with those purchases, all those items, a percentage is going back into the foundation to help support this effort. In addition, many community members are also making one-time contributions. Thank you for all who have supported that. Unfortunately, the foundation is, is postponing the stadium for the future events until the spring of 2021. In speaking with Brandon McManus, we felt it was the safest thing to do at the In speaking with Brandon McManus, we felt it was the safest thing to do at this point. Last week, we reached out to sponsors of the gala and kickball tournament, and all have said that they will support our efforts in the spring. We are currently in the process of contacting the families who registered for kickball to initiate their refunds as well. Although schools are closed behind the scenes, the work of the foundation continues. For more information on the foundation and its activities, please contact Christine Labrofsky at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mrs. Ramich?
The comment. Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. And if you would just, I mean, obviously communicate to everyone else involved in the foundation. I think more than ever before, this situation has highlighted the inequities across the state. And I think for us to see the inequities and implement a plan within, you know, a couple of weeks to support students who need to have access to our learning. I mean, I think this just aligns with all of the other actions that the administration has taken. Immediately putting a plan in place to get devices in every single student's hand. Then following up with, okay, now who needs internet? And then partnering with the Education Foundation. And I think also that speaks to Julianne's representation on the board. And at, you know, with the North Penn Education Foundation as well. I mean, this is just one of those like wins where we can feel like we really were able to do something right. And I'm just very appreciative of that. And I think it completely aligns with all of the work that we've been doing around equity. So thank you.
I couldn't agree more. And I really want to thank Dr. Ruffo for her participation in that foundation meeting and being able to provide incredibly precise data about the needs of these families. We knew who these individuals were down to. I mean, the numbers were so precise. So that being able to have the data and knowing our community was so incredible. And then the level of engagement then to then be able to get these devices out so quickly. I think we had the, you know, the parent who was on earlier talking about one of the silver linings that may come from this is an increase in parent engagement. And the level of parent engagement in the receipt of these devices and helping to connect with their kids was also just truly heartwarming. And then just again, too. I also want to give a shout out to Dr. Landis, who was able and her team for being able to do incredibly quick research and identifying you know, what was the best tool for this student? And being able to provide all that in such a timely manner and then being able to mobilize the foundation was was spot on. So we are continuing efforts to raise funds for this effort. So please feel free to continue to follow North Penn Strong.
And I want to thank everybody for their generosity. This is incoming out of the school district budget. This is done from the generosity of our community. Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. That's really great to hear that that all that effort was made to get the kids that needed the internet access. So, and I know I bought my North Penn Strong t-shirts for a couple for our family. So I'm looking forward to wearing that maybe next board meeting I'll have it. Okay, moving on then to the Legislative Committee Report. That would be Mr. McCain.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoll. As expected, Pennsylvania Senate Bill 751 quickly passed to become Act 13 and included many of the measures promoted by education associations like PSBA, PASBO and PSEA. It paves the way for flexibility on graduation requirements, the total number of required school days and more in light of new but hopefully temporary realities. Action in Harrisburg, by many accounts, remains a little disorganized. And that has opened up opportunities for both misconceptions and more drastic legislative proposals to receive more attention. As an example, earlier this week, a joint letter from PSBA, PASBO and PSEA was sent to the General Assembly in an attempt to clear up some misunderstandings about the shutdown abruptly saving school districts substantial amounts of money. A misconception that seemed to be driving monetary support for a property tax freeze. Those of you that were tuned in for our previous finance meetings saw what that could do to North Penn. Here in North Penn, we continue to distribute thousands of meals and educate thousands of students in entirely new ways, as was illustrated at our Special Finance Committee meeting previously on the 6th. Unexpected obligations and expenses have come, even as our projected investment returns and other sources of revenue look less stable. Continuing to communicate our realities to our representatives in Harrisburg will be important moving forward. PSBA's advocacy day remains scheduled for May 11th at this time, but that may change. And finally, the work of forming PSBA's 2021 legislative agenda will soon begin establishing the goals of statewide advocacy efforts on behalf of public school boards for the year to come. Items for consideration can be submitted by June 30th. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. Does anyone have any comments or questions? I look forward to the advocacy day. Hopefully it's in person, but if not, virtual will do. So.
Well, a lot to talk about.
Yeah, exactly. So thank you. Okay, moving on then to the Solicitors Report. Mr. Summers.
Thank you, Madam President. My report this evening consists of just stating that in response to the pandemic, a number of new laws have been passed. As Mr. McCain mentioned in his report, that includes at the state level, Act 13 of 2020. We've also seen legislation at the federal level, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act and the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security or CARES Act. All of these laws that are being passed, both at the state level and at the federal level, are imposing new requirements and new obligations upon the school district that really we're learning day by day. And one day, a thousand page law will come into in effect. And then the next day, we're expected to know exactly how to carry out our responsibilities under that law. And it's a challenge under typical circumstances to implement and comply with new legislation. And we're doing it under obviously very difficult circumstances. So our office is working carefully to monitor the situation and monitor new laws, monitor guidance from the federal government, state government, local government in some instances, and work closely with the district to make sure that we're meeting all of our legal obligations during this time and then planning for the future what obligations we may have moving forward. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Does anyone have any questions from Mr. Summers? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Dietrich, please.
Thank you. I recommend the adoption of the consent items, namely the adoption of policies, the repeal of policies, amendment of policies, contracts, textbook and resource adoption for 202021, the alternative placements and the student agreements.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded, I think, by Mrs. Ramich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then under the remaining items, under the non-consent items, the first item is recommend the nomination of Julianne Ramich to serve as the North Penn School District Representative to the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors for the term of July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2023.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motioned, I think, by Mrs. G and seconded by Mr. Fusco. I'm sorry, it's hard to tell. Yeah. Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Ramich for representing us again.
I recommend the approval of the awarding of bids for physical education uniforms and server hardware to the vendors noted on the attached bid tabulation documents.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion. Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. G. I think. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Recommend approval of issuing the notice of intent to award bids to the contractors listed and attached for the amount stated for the NAP Elementary School construction renovation project. Namely, that would be general construction to Low Bar Incorporated, plumbing construction to Michael Mechanical, mechanical construction to Michael Mechanical, electrical construction to Cedar Electric Incorporated, asbestos abatement to Newber, Environmental Services Incorporated.
Do I have a motion? Motion, Ramich. Seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Recommend approval of issuing a request for proposals for air monitoring, testing and inspection services to monitor the NAP Elementary School Project asbestos abatement work.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved, Lewis Campbell.
Thank you, Wanda. Motion by Mr. Casa, seconded by Mrs. or Dr. Lewis Campbell. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the personnel items as per the attached.
So a motion?
So moved.
Seconded. Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. G. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. Moving on then to the financial reports. Mr. Scrocky.
Thank you, Madam President. Couple of quick updates before I give the numbers for the month of March. Just a quick update on our tax rebate program for the 1920 school year. We've had 462 applicants now so far this year, and we've issued almost $49,000 worth of rebates. The average rebate being $106. We've actually seen a 22% increase applicants this year compared to last year. So that's awesome. We'd still like to get that number up even further, but the 22% increase considering this is our second year, that's great news. And also, there's been a 61% increase in the amount of total dollars issued in rebates this year compared to last year. So we'll keep up with promotion the best we can and hopefully we can increase participation even further next year. Secondly, for the community that might be tuning in to tonight's session that perhaps didn't view Tuesday night's session, just want to briefly talk about the economic impact of the COVID-19 situation. As we heard Tuesday night, we've lowered some of our revenue estimates in the 2021 budget as a result of the economic situation to the tune of over $2 million, specifically in the areas of investment income, earned income tax and realty transfer tax. Also, on Tuesday night, we modeled a couple of different economic scenarios in terms of how long an economic recovery might actually last and what impact that has on future finances for the school district. So we also are closely monitoring the state budget. At this point, we're kind of fearful that we might lose some of our basic ed funding and special ed funding that the governor outlined in his February budget address. But perhaps some of that reduction could be backfilled from federal money that might be coming our way. So more to come on that. We're still waiting for some specific information. Also, to follow up on Mr. Fusco's Finance Committee Report, I have updated numbers on our School Nutrition Services Program or Emergency Feeding Program. We've now served 45,766 meals to children since the shutdown, including the meals that were distributed today. Just a reminder for our community that meals are provided free of charge on Mondays and Thursdays from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the following elementary schools, Hatfield, Inglewood, Knapp, Cope and Oak Park. Also, if you'd like to follow the North Penn School Nutrition Services Department on Twitter, you can follow them at North Penn SNS. So I know Mrs. Ms. Froelich quite often tweets on her account there with the School Nutrition Services Department. So please follow her if you are a Twitterer. In terms of the numbers for May, I'm sorry, for March 2020, we had revenues totaling 9.3 million for the month and cash dispersments totaling $25.3 million, leaving us with a cash balance at the end of March of $111.5 million. So I ask for your consideration for approval of the treasury report for March.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casa. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Scrocky?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Scrocky, through helping to lead us through these difficult times. It's really interesting when you share those numbers on the tax rebate program. It's innovative. We continue to expand it. And I think Mr. Rush had made this comment in one of the finance meetings. Those are dollars that are more than likely to also go directly into our local economy. Those are dollars for our most vulnerable senior citizens who may have to decide between filling a gas tank or filling a prescription or having groceries during this time. And so this is what community does. This is a great sign of local government doing what it does best because it was in a position to, thanks to your stewardship and the administration, Dr. Dietrich, to make sure that we could provide for the community this way, whether it's through tax rebates or the meals program, which just continues to impress. Mr. Scrocky, could you perhaps give a, just a concise update for those who might not have been at the Finance Committee Meeting about the NAP intent to bid and how those dollars have already been secured and that's not coming out of future budgets?
Absolutely. So we actually borrowed, considered the borrowing for NAP Elementary School in three phases. And two of those three phases are now complete. We borrowed $10 million in 2018, another $10 million in 2019. And what's interesting, even though those are recent borrowings, we did refinance those issues already, as was referenced in the Finance Committee Report, and saved over $400,000, even though they were just recently financed, that really good interest rates. As you know, rates tumbled earlier this year and we did refinance those issues to save another $400,000. And then the third part of the NAP borrowing will be approximately $7 to $8 million. That will occur maybe later in 2020 or in calendar year 2021. So two thirds in essence of the NAP Elementary School construction project is already accounted for and the funds have already been borrowed, is already included in the budget. Wouldn't be any additional costs. It's already been factored in the budget and our long-term fiscal planning.
Thank you for that update, Mr. Scrocky. Are there any other questions for Mr. Scrocky? Okay, we have a motion on the tape on the floor. So all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, I'm recommending ratification of dispersments for the month of March in the amount of $28,406,282.71.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. G. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next item, we have budget transfers and these were reviewed at the Finance Committee Meeting. I'm recommending approval of the attached budget transfers for the period of March 1, 2020 through March 31st, 2020, in the amount of $168,176.33.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. McCain. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And finally, for informational purposes, Madam President, we do have our monthly financial reports. And again, we do review these and provide a detailed summary every month as part of our normal Finance Committee Meetings. So that concludes the finance report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Scrocky. Okay, moving on then to other business. We have revised board committee assignments. Revised listing of committee members is attached. We have a new policy committee. We're splitting policy off from the educational community. It's now called the Educational Curriculum and Instruction Committee. So those members will be Mrs. G as the chair, Christian Fusco, Alicia G. and Tim McCain are the members of the ECI. The policy committee will have Mr. Fusco as the chair and the members on that committee will be Mr. Fusco, Mr. Rush and myself. Okay. And then moving on, the next piece of other business is to announce that in order to keep the NAP Elementary School project on schedule, we are having another action meeting on April 27th in order to award the bids and issue the notice to proceed to the contractors. So mark that on your calendars, please. Next up will be the second audience of citizens opportunity. Next up will be the second Audience of Citizens opportunity. Mr. Gilmar, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Mr. Patchell, one quick second. Do we have the timer?
Okay.
Yes, the timer's activated.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Ready to go.
You're good.
Okay. The average cost of a hospital stay is about $30,000 in the COVID. I never heard any, any TV media, anybody say, "These people are gonna owe a ton of money." I'm sure some of the people would be right here in North Penn School District. I wonder where that money's coming from. I told you many times that only 30% of our students even finish in four years. I know it's hard to believe, but there's lots of things that come up, just like they come up in real life. The best of plans, it never worked out. So if unemployment is at 20 or 30%, that U-shape, that may not ever happen. The future is very bleak. Many of the former students, graduates of this district who are in college, I'll tell you what, they won't be going back because you know what? The family will be dead broke, and they probably won't be living at that address if they were renting because they'll get evicted eventually. Okay, so we have a lot of these things to to keep in mind. Now, the state, their revenue in one month went down by $300 million. Wow, do you think they're really planning for that? There's a lot of pain there. They're gonna do stuff to make, they're gonna make the state, they have to have a balanced budget. Okay? And the main thing I want to know is, how is anybody gonna return to these buildings? Are they gonna get tested every single day? When they get on the bus, there's new people, they might have got sick overnight, I don't know. I said, how are you gonna have any sports, any type of sports, without any spectators? You're not gonna be able to use that Crawford Stadium. I keep telling you. The state, it may be years before they get a vaccine, and you'll be able to confidently actually hold anything at that, at that stadium. It'll just be, I don't know, an abandoned building. And you have to really be be thinking. You need to stop spending money. You keep plowing forward on and on, "Oh, we can do it, we can do it." You know what? Back in 1966, when I was in the military, we had a lot of bright people. We had Donald Rumsfeld. It was beautiful. They said, "Oh, we'll get out of here right away." And it went on and on and on. And then 1968 came, and then it was tet. Wow, this is really horrible. Yes, it was. It went on and on and on. You don't know if this COVID-19, maybe there'll be a second wave. You're planning like it's all over. No, it isn't. You're gonna find out that you're gonna be enveloped, you're gonna be outflanked, and that'll be the end of you. And you know what? There'll be no way to get out.
Aye, Mr. Patchell.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment, Mr. Gilmar?
Hi, everybody.
Hey, how are y'all?
I am well. I just wanted to speak on our family's experience with distance learning. I have three boys in the district, two in elementary at NAP and one in middle school at Pendale. I just, with two of those having IEPs and knowing their IEPs well, I've been trying to support them as much as I can with the, you know, reading along, modifying things if they need, if that needs to be done. The biggest thing that I'm having, though, is with middle school. The for classes that are not, say, PA-required classes, I feel like we're getting enough work with English and Algebra, Literacy, History, Science, Academic Support, and and all of those. To get into art and exploring technology and things, it's been really difficult to get to those. And mostly because of because of the IEP and and issues that we have with taking breaks and whatnot. So I just didn't know if there was a way to consider making some provisions about the ability to drop those classes that may not be PA-required classes. Just something to think about. And then I also just wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Flynn at Pendale, who joined for my sixth grader's transition to middle school IEP meeting. It was great to have a face for him to see on the computer and and be able to ask him some questions about middle school personally. And then also, he's been a great help in supporting our family as far as our teaching with our middle school. So shout out to all the teachers, though. Great job. I I'm totally impressed with how they've been been able to to pick up and and get these kids learning. And also, the emotional support that they're offering to the kids and asking, you know, in the start of some classes, "How are things going?" Just in a Google form of a check-in for attendance, asking them, you know, "How's it going? Do you have anything you want to tell me?" It's just, it's great to see the opportunity for them to be able to reach out to their teachers if they need to. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Cozempel. Thank you for the kind words, too, for the staff. And I think if you have any specific questions, it would probably be best to email Dr. Ruffo to think about that. And she can get back to you about your concerns. Okay.
Hi.
Hi, how are y'all? Mrs. Fries?
I am. Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay, thank you for taking my call. Just calling in as a, you know, a very worried taxpayer of North Penn School District. I am not on board with the urgency that the teachers have. I don't feel that there's an urgency to get the information to the students in a timely fashion or the follow-up. I just heard today that my grandson, who is in first grade, not crazy. I mean, obviously, you gotta worry about, you know, high schoolers and things like that. On Wednesday, they only have art and music. And so we had to draw a picture, and it's not due until next Wednesday. He has no math, no any other subject. Art and music was the only thing he had to do on Wednesday. I just, I'm appalled at the lack of urgency to get information to these children and have them working. And just the constant, kids, kids need consistency. They need math every day, or, you know, or, you know, something. Just to have, you know, music, and that was pretty much it. It just doesn't seem like that's doable. It's not doable in my world, put it that way. And just was wondering, you know, what the board is doing to oversee the curriculum that the teachers are putting out there for the children and see that they are really meeting the standards that we really require of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fries.
Mrs. Stoll, I'm sure that I would invite Mrs. Fries to our next ECP meeting where we'll review the continuity of education plan that needed to be submitted by every school district to PDE. The ECP committee has already been sent, actually, the entire board was sent that plan and had the opportunity to review all of the plan. I will tell you, as an educator, that is very much aligned with what other school districts are doing as well, as well as what professional organizations are recommending in terms of time. I'm sure that Dr. Centurio isn't on the call, but Dr. Ruffo, I'm sure, could speak to this. My understanding is that on Wednesday is the day that we're kind of giving the kids to take part in specials. There are kids that play instruments. That's, I believe, that's the reason for Wednesday, if I don't have the plan right in front of me. But Dr. Ruffo could, I'm sure, speak to that at some point. I would overall invite you to our next ECP meeting. That's when we would be kind of just an overview of the continuity of education plan and what does it look like in elementary, middle, and high school. Overall, I would say, as an educator, I commend North Penn School District for how they are approaching distance learning, as well as our teachers, who I believe are working really hard. And you sometimes can't see that from the outside, and I understand that. It looks very different, but I do think, I want to commend our teachers, at least. I think that they are working hard. But the board has reviewed, to answer the question, the continuity of education plan.
Thank you, Mrs. G. Dr. Ruffo, I saw you. Did you want to make a comment as well? Sure, yeah, definitely. Thank you for the input. This Wednesday was our first time implementing specials on Wednesday, so we certainly have a few kinks to work out after the first day, and we've already met as an administrative team to talk about how to improve that. So thank you for your feedback, and you can certainly reach out to me if you have any additional questions. Thank you, Dr. Ruffo. Mr. Gilmar, is there any? Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Gilmar. Appreciate all your assistance in putting this virtual meeting together tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Dr. Lewis Campbell. Thank you so much, everybody, and I guess we'll see you the next meeting. I don't have the date right in front of me. I just already closed my laptop. I apologize. So, but it'll be announced on the North Penn website, and it'll be a virtual meeting as well. All right, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.